Which is this area north that is the wall and Prospect Park properties and integrated in. We think moving the zoning through this transitional zoning industrials classification would allow it to be better integrated to what we're doing on the south side. And it really is in keeping with the jobs focus that we had in the semi. And we tried to work with developers and others to get industrial jobs there. And as Mr. Wall said, it just didn't work very well. What we need to do is to build on what infrastructure we have, the light rail system and the energy that's in the market right now, and take advantage of that. And I think the smallest change is worthwhile. So in conclusion, I would say that we don't need to wait. The zoning should be this transitional industrial, and the community has had a lot of input into this and is very excited about the type of community that we're creating north of University Avenue and hopefully now north of the transitway. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else? Yes, please state your name and address.
Clay Lambert. I own the best gas station in the neighborhood that you forgot, Mr. Wall. I'm going to make this real brief. I've been on the ground there for 13 years, and I've watched all this development come up. I've seen all the reports and all the meetings and stuff like that. And I think it's important, but it just keeps to be repeating itself. And what I see on the ground there, because everyone comes in the gas station, rich, poor, black, white, male, female, everybody comes and you hear everything. And really what we need in the neighborhood is more bodies. We need more customers. We need more neighbors. We need more people to pay tax base and jobs and such, and bicyclists and car people and all that kind of stuff. So what I'm hearing, I listened here the whole time, and I think you guys are a little concerned to make a preemptive move, which I believe quite frankly you're going to make anyways in a few months or a year or something like that. It's going to be, it's going to be hands down what you're going to do anyways. So I don't think this is a knee jerk or a defensive move or anything like that. I think it's something that you're going to end up doing anyways. So from my point of view on the ground, also, all this development, I've seen a lot less crime. Everyone feels a lot safer. The tension is way down in the neighborhood. The construction guys are great, and everyone's kind of really getting along. So that's my two cents. Thanks, everybody, for your time.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? See, Noah and I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, are there any further questions? Or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Just sitting here wondering and thinking about the future of land use on this site. How much land do we actually have in our industrial employment districts citywide? And then, and this may be a really difficult question to answer, but say over the last five years, how much of that has actively been redeveloped or has been developed for an industrial use? I'm just wondering holistically throughout the city, what's available, what's actually been developed, and what impact or percentage does nine acres mean to that overall area?
Commissioner Slack, on the first question, was the total number of acres in industrial employment districts? I don't have that in front of me. The number we put in the staff report was just that percentage of the total surface area of the city, which is 7%. Obviously, it's a number we can get in terms of the total acreage, which I will try to find while the discussion continues after this. And the second question about what percentage has been or how much has been redeveloped within industrial employment districts?
Yeah, I guess for me, I'm just trying to get my head around how much, you know, land there is within this industrial employment district. How much is still available for development? Obviously, there's development on maybe 5% of it, say. So how much does that actually leave for future industrial uses? And say over the last five years, just off the top of my head, how much is actively being redeveloped? Or how much inquiries have we gotten on what is available? Just to give a sense of what the big impact is for taking nine acres out of the equation.
Sure. I think Jack's going to have a good answer for it, but I want to.
I think it's in the report, 54 square miles.
Well, the city, Commissioner Reel, and the city as a whole is 54 square miles. So the land dedicated to industrial employment districts is a small percentage of that, 7% of that.
Or four square miles in the report.
Oh, oh, thank you. The number is in the report. Thank you for citing my own work. Four square miles. I want to answer part of your question, Commissioner Slack, and then turn it over to Jack, who has more to provide. We do know that there's been a consistent trend in recent years, going back to the time that the industrial land use study was adopted, that we're losing consistently, we're losing square, building square footage devoted to industrial uses and land area devoted to industrial uses and zoning. That number has been a continuous drop for quite a long time. I don't have the specific numbers in front of me, but Jack Byers, Long Range Planning Manager, wanted to add some.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, commissioners. While I don't have exact numbers for you, there is, we're thinking about it. As Paul and Beth mentioned, we're studying it. We don't have all of the answers yet, but we are thinking about it. And so there is a proportional concern that we have. When you think about all of that land in industrial employment districts, the vast majority of it is in Shoreham Yards, Humboldt Yards, and the rail yards here. And while it's certainly possible that some of that land would be sold by the railroads, it's not likely to happen soon or quickly. And so if you take all of that existing land owned by those railroads and take that out of the mix, then you are really left with something much, much smaller. And the pressure that we get, or the calls that we always get from our colleagues in CPED Economic Development, is they're working with potential folks who want to move to the city, bring jobs to the city, and they can't find tracts of land large enough. And the land has been chopped up over the years, or I don't have to tell all of you that the use code tables in the zoning code have gotten quite industrial, or quite, sorry, liberal, so that you can have things like, and I can't name them off the top of my head, but you can have charter schools, you can have religious institutions, you can have doggy daycares, and all sorts of things that aren't, and you can have truck parking, all kinds of things that aren't really about making things and giving people jobs. So what we're trying to understand in the study that we're doing is how much land is actually available of all of that land? How much land is actually available for folks who want to come in and do some kind of industrial development? And then on top of that, I think the other concern that we're really trying to think through is that none of this land is clean, so all of it needs resources. And that's a resource question that we're working on, not only for the city, but obviously with our institutional partners and with developers as well. So it's a long way of saying that there's very, of that land on the map that's in purple, very little of that is actually in play.
Commissioner Lukey.
I actually have a question for Carol Lansing. She's the project contact on this. So in understanding all the testimony and how compelling it has been, the concern and the thing that I keep coming back to is, can you explain to me how this won't set precedent? Because I think a concern that we have isn't, is looking at, we have a finite amount of industrial zone land for future land use. So whether or not it's in demand today or been sitting dormant for 15 years, we have to look 20, 50 years down the road, whether or not industrial is what it was or whether it means something different. Our concern is, is this going to open the floodgates? So every developer now has a precedent set saying, this land's not being used, we can't get anyone to build a factory on it, therefore, let's do mixed use or this, that, or the other. Because I can certainly think of certain areas being more appealing for that, leaving other areas of the city that are already experiencing hardship to be stuck with kind of the dregs. So I'm just kind of wondering, how do we, from your perspective, how do you see this as setting or not setting precedent that would have an impact on that going forward?
Okay, sure. I think this is the most highly discretionary decision that has come before you. It is pure policy. And so, you know, all zoning is case by case, but if anything has less precedential force or requirement, it's policy decisions like comprehensive plan amendments. Also, this is a particular, this is a unique situation. It is an industrial area near a transit station, but also in an area where the community has been highly engaged in planning and development activities and supports this. Also, the Tower Side Innovation District is unique to this location. So there's one other industrial employment district near a transit station that's like in Hiawatha. And that area is actually developed and functioning industrial land, and that's, this is vacant. And while you hear that there are users who can't find large enough tracts of land, they haven't wanted to go here. I think there's, you know, a lot of, to date, and that's another unique factor, I think, is the need for the infrastructure, the need for the road connections. Because as Mr. Wall and Jeff Barnhart have said, they're not against, that they're going to keep looking for industrial office users, and they have a lot of land up there to put it on, but bridging the transitway and creating a destination location with the parks and the connections is what they need to catalyze that. So I think there's a lot of unique factors, and it's a highly, you know, you are not bound by having granted it to one that anybody can say, well, now you have to grant it to me.
Right. Commissioner Magrino, then Commissioner Bender.
I had a quick question for staff. So if we were to adopt the changes recommended by the applicant today, so it's going to go to city council for approval and then to the Met Council, and then does that then come back to us if they have any concerns or questions about it? I mean, I guess my question is, so if we were to adopt this, it's probably going to take some amount of time, you know, maybe six months, something like that, for it to actually go into effect compared to timeline of just doing the comp plan and adopting it in, you know, maybe 2020? So how long would it take to change it if we approve the request?
Commissioner Magrino, yes, it would go to the city council, the same route that, you know, any other request would take. It'll go to the zoning and planning committee and on the full city council. If the city council were to approve the application, then it would be staff's responsibility to put together the application that meets the council's requirements and submit it to them. They would, the Met Council then would be on, according to our opinion from the city attorney, would be on the same 61-day, 6120-day clock as a development application. So then it would, it would come back within that, within that time period. So it takes some time, but it doesn't take as long as the larger comprehensive plan that it is going to take.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Jack. I think your presentation had the differences between the two land use classifications in it at the beginning.
I'm sorry?
Did your presentation have the differences between the two land use classifications in it, or like a use table at the beginning?
I don't think we had a slide on that, Commissioner Bender, but I can speak to it.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. I think so, I guess my bigger question is, it'd be helpful to know the differences between these two land use applications, and I was also reflecting here and would like your answer too. So if we did support the change in the land use classification, that's like step one of any sort of development proposal that would come forward. And so there would likely need to be rezonings and other changes. So for example, if the applicant brought forward, if any applicant brought forward a proposal for this site in the future and it didn't have enough industrial use in it or something, it seems like maybe there's some leeway in terms of what the rezoning would be, but I'm not sure how the land use is lining up to what the underlying zoning is.
Commissioner Bender, I'll try to sort that out. So the existing future land use guidance, and we're talking about the parcel-specific future land use guidance. So there's the two layers that we were talking about before. One layer is the industrial employment district and the associated boundary, and then the other layer below that is the parcel-specific guidance. I think your question, Commissioner Bender, is about the parcel-specific guidance and the difference between industrial and transitional industrial. So in industrial, I'm just going to read the definition from the comprehensive plan, includes areas suited for industrial development and limited supporting commercial uses generally found within industrial employment districts with a high level of policy protection and an emphasis on job retention and creation. Industrial uses have primacy over other uses. It's a great word, primacy. Transitional industrial, we have this in the report, don't we? Did we leave that? Oh, here it is. Okay. On page five, if you're following along, under amendment request, the transitional industrial definition, industrial areas located outside of industrial employment districts will be labeled transitional since they may eventually evolve to other uses compatible with surrounding development. Although they may remain industrial for some time, they will not have the same level of policy protection as areas within industrial districts. So this definition, you know, if you're thinking about the word transitional, there's a couple ways you can think about it. You can think of it spatially, transitioning from one land use to another. You can think about it temporally, over time, changing from one use to another. This definition emphasizes the latter, the temporal change. And to your second question, so as Beth said at the very beginning of all this, that change introduces more flexibility in terms of what land uses would be supported by policy. You'll notice that this definition of transitional industrial doesn't name those land uses. It just says, "may evolve to other uses compatible with surrounding development." Okay? Traditionally, it's been the practice that the industrial, industrial living overlay district has been viewed as an appropriate zoning district for transitional industrial areas because it allows that flexibility. All of the underlying industrial rights remain from I-1, I-2, or I-3, whatever the district is. In this case, it's I-2, with the addition of allowing housing and the addition of allowing, some additional commercial uses that aren't otherwise allowed in industrial districts, but only in existing buildings. Okay? So you can't build like a brand-new grocery store, but you could put, say, a retail use into an existing building. And a really important point about this is that that just allows all of those things and doesn't dictate in any way, shape, or form what the percentage of any particular use can be within a particular property or district. Okay? So they're just all allowed. If you can fit them, you can do them.
Maybe a follow-up then. We've had this project, this conceptual project described to us, but we don't have a land use application for a specific project in front of us. But so from what I understand, it sounds like we would be then, if this kind of project came forward, looking at a rezoning from industrial to a commercial land use classification or something to allow for the project that's being described? Is that kind of where this would be heading in the future?
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Bender, I hesitate to speculate exactly what applications might come before you from the property owner, you know, after this. But, you know, there's reference to housing in the application. Certainly, that would require a rezoning to either the industrial living overlay district or some other district. There's reference to a grocery store, which would require a rezoning. And so there's a number of different applications that would, that would be required to achieve what's laid out in the development concept.
So I guess just a final comment then is, I mean, it's a little unusual again to have kind of this very specific concept in our minds as we're thinking this through, but I'm reminding myself that this is really a policy decision about whether or not we want to consider allowing for uses that are in the transitional industrial classification rather than in the purely industrial classification, but that doesn't mean we would have to. So like this decision, a rezoning is a legislative decision. And so if a project came forward that, again, didn't seem to meet the goals even in the amended comp plan, for example, didn't have enough jobs or other reasons, that wouldn't have to be approved. So that's just a statement you can comment or clarify if you want.
Commissioner Bender, I'll just confirm that, that a rezoning, of course, is a legislative decision, just like this.
Commissioner Kronzer.
Really cool question. You know, one of my concerns is about additional public pressure, pressure on the public dollar to build additional infrastructure that doesn't exist here. Has there been any discussion about how additional infrastructure, or streets, sewers, water mains, how that would be paid for with this proposal?
Commissioner Kronzer, I think that it would be best, Commissioner Bender made the appropriate point just now, that, you know, really what's before you is this policy decision as it relates to the comprehensive plan, and it's less about the specific proposal that is laid out in concept in the, in the application. I believe there is some reference in the application to, to that question about paying for the, for the infrastructure. I'd encourage you to separate that, frankly, from the question that's before you. And, but, you know, it may be a question for the applicant in terms of how they plan to pay for it.
All right. Paul, I have a question, and again, this may be a somewhat tangential one. Obviously, there are some older structures on the site. Is there any indication of the significance of any historic resources? Or what do you know about those? Obviously, we have a process for, if someone were to come in and propose demolishing everything and building a new building, but what information does the city currently have?
So President Brown, I want to make a couple of things clear about that. One is, so the larger property that the applicant owns includes, you know, what's referred to as the United Crusher's elevator, that is not within the area subject to this amendment. I just want to make sure that this amendment request, I want to make sure that's clear. So somebody correct me if I'm wrong on staff, but I believe the only structure that's actually within the area being proposed for the amendment is the Harris Machinery Building. And I believe that actually did receive a demolition permit at one point. Is that correct, Jack? Yeah. At the applicant's request. Yeah. So it went through what it needed to go through in terms of considerations for historic.
I might ask the applicant, it looks like they maybe have a response to that as well.
Yeah, I'll just clarify that. It's a remodeling permit because we're trying to turn that one structure that has historical significance into the food hall. So we're trying to preserve that at all costs.
Okay, okay. All right. Are there any further questions? Or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Magrino.
So I will start us off, I think, for conversation purposes. I would like to make a motion to approve the application for the comprehensive plan amendment, and I'll explain a little bit about that in a second.
All right. Is there a second? We have a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Magrino.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very grateful for the very thorough staff report and to the thorough presentation from the applicant here. Obviously, a lot of work and thought went into both of them. I did go walk around the site on Friday as well. You know, in this case, this does seem like a policy decision. And if the Met Council has a rule or a law that we're able to accept amendments to the comprehensive plan up until, it sounds like June, I don't see a problem with doing that in this case. I do understand, sort of in principle, wanting to wait until the comprehensive plan is finished and having those conversations about industrial employment in the city generally, but it does appear that in this specific location, there has been a lot of thought that's been put into this, and the site has changed a great deal since we adopted the comprehensive plan and even since the stationary plan. It does appear that there's policy support for it as well. The applicant went through that in the resolution from 2015, encouraging us to think of, you know, innovative and creative ways to use land like this in the city. And I do think that this is one of those cases. It also sounds like the applicant has made a pretty extensive good faith effort to find other uses for this property that would fit with the industrial employment category. Those are all listed in their, their application, and they haven't had any luck. And so I think that this is something good for us to try.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Just, just to add on a little bit to Commissioner Magrino's comments, you know, hearing the testimony tonight and being relatively familiar with the, the general Prospect North Tower Side area through my previous job and my current job as supporters of the vision, you know, I think we are seeing, there's a little bit of a disconnect in what, to me, and what the vision that's been stated by the community and what, and what we're looking at today and what we've already seen in other land use applications, which is that we, we have heard testimony tonight about this entire area being mushed together zoning, to use one of the public testimony words. And, and, you know, I think we're seeing on the south side of the transitway, we're seeing almost all residential, a mix of residential, and on the north side of the transitway, we're, we're pushing for exclusively industrial. And, you know, I think that we, that it would behoove the city, and I know we have Robin Garwood from Cam Gordon's office here and Councilmember/Commissioner Lisa Bender, behoove the city to think about how we could consider a policy framework that does look at mushing it together in the entire area. I, you know, I understand the timing question, but that feels dangerous to me. We just, you know, it's not at all the same, but it makes me think of Merrick Garland. I think that this, we have a tool that is here for a reason, and if we don't think that this kind of tool should be used, then we should get rid of the tool. But this seems like it fits precisely, this application seems like it fits precisely within what that tool is designed to do. And I think there has been a lot of change in this area, and, and there has been a lot of work from the community. And I know that the, that various delegations from the city have been involved in this planning process over the last many years as well. So I just wanted to reflect on, on a couple of those pieces since I was the second to the motion there. But I think this doesn't feel like, like the timing is off, and it does feel like this is an area where there's, there's a lot going on, where this, this kind of idea fits with the vision. And to take particular note of Commissioner Bender's point that we have an underlying zoning and we have industrial guidance that will remain in the comprehensive plan, and I would expect that we would, you know, particularly with, with CPED staffs, take on this, that we would really push for something extraordinary and something that does involve jobs and industry, and we have the tools to do that.
All right. And I might just clarify with staff, obviously, with this type of application, we have a little bit more latitude than some of the other types of applications we see. I just want to make sure the types of statements, and I can summarize at the end, but are the types of statements you are hearing acceptable as backup for, provided this motion carries?
President Brown, as has been stated a few times, this is indeed a legislative and a policy decision. I think it's important to note, regardless of how you come down on this, that the seven factors for consideration that are included in the application and in the staff report are, those are not in ordinance or in the comprehensive plan itself. They are simply factors for consideration.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner Kronzer.
And just to add one, one more detail, and really what pushes my thoughts over the edge on this is, this nine acres is fully within the quarter-mile radius of the light rail station. I mean, that's a, the proximity is almost shockingly close to the light rail station here.
All right. Is there any further discussion? I can, I can summarize very quickly, and I think commissioners, three commissioners who spoke all raised some good points. And certainly, I believe that staff made a very compelling case for not changing the designation for this area. Obviously, city policy, including all of the small area plans for this area, the employment and industrial district study from 10 or so years ago, really designate that transit way as, as kind of a hard and fast boundary. And so there certainly is a lot of policy support for, for keeping that designation the way it is. I, I think though, you know, like the commissioner said, that this, some of those studies are several years old, and this area has certainly changed. And I think one of the most significant changes is the opening of the Prospect Park LRT station. And in that vicinity, we've seen very significant development interest in that area transform very rapidly. In fact, I think even more development. In fact, I think even more development interest than many of us expected. And as Commissioner Kronzer pointed out, you know, this entire site, nine-acre site, is within a pretty easy walking distance, particularly if additional infrastructure is constructed on that station. And our comprehensive plan does have a policy of promoting higher-density development in close proximity to transit stations. And certainly, you know, if someone, as the applicant said, used this site to simply park trailers outside, that's not a very intense or very good use of land in that type of location. I'm also kind of convinced by the historic preservation argument. I realize that there are uses of this property that are allowed, and even some of those that the applicant is proposing that, you know, would be allowed under the current comprehensive plan designation, under the current zoning, and some opportunity for that structure to be preserved. I think, though, providing some additional flexibility as far as what is allowed there maybe helps that, helps that along. I also believe that, you know, as the applicant pointed out, there's not a lot of public street infrastructure in this location. And, you know, it doesn't, I can't necessarily speak for the city, but it doesn't seem like there's a lot of interest in the city facilitating construction of new streets in this area. And if more intense development is to occur, I think it's probably the case that some other types of uses might need to be allowed to support that and make that more feasible. So is there any further discussion? If there is none, we have a motion and a second to approve the comprehensive plan amendment. And clerk, please call the roll.
Reland?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
No.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
So that's seven to one.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item six. This, of course, will go to the city council as well. And that is the last item we have for today, so our meeting is adjourned.